The Monday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at six P. M. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Gottlieb.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Ottehway.
Here.
Mayor Protem Schlegel.
Here.
And Mayor Hanley.
Here. All right, Commissioners, I have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion on that agenda? Commissioner Ottehway?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
And a second? Protem Schlegel?
I'll second the motion.
Perfect. Do we have any discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Since Sally's not out here to vote, do I say it's six to zero, or do I? Okay. Motion passes six to zero. All right, that brings us to the announcements portion. I have a couple announcements tonight. The city of Marquette will be having its annual Christmas parade and tree lighting ceremony this upcoming Friday from six to eight P. M. The tree lighting will take place in the Marquette Commons, and the parade route will travel south down Third Street until they end there. The Marquette Post Office will also be out collecting letters during the parade to Santa, so make sure you get your letters so you can give it in, and so it has enough time to travel to the North Pole for Santa to know what you'd like for Christmas. And then secondly, a little more serious, a team of assessors from the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission will be here on Thursday, December twelfth, for its onsite assessment of the Marquette City Police Department. As part of this, employees and members of the general public are encouraged to provide comments to the team. You may do so by telephone or by email. The public may call nine oh six eight six nine zero four seven six on Thursday, December twelfth, between the hours of one and two P. M., or they can email comments to jrink@marquettemi.gov. You can also email comments to the Accreditation Program Manager if you'd like, which is R. W. I. L. E. S. Wiles, at MichiganPoliceChiefs.org. These comments are limited to five minutes if you are calling in, and they must address the agency's ability to comply with the commission's standards. A copy of those standards are available at the Marquette Police Department if you would like to review them. That is all I have for announcements today, which brings us to boards and committees. We have one appointment tonight. Commissioner, do I have a motion on this appointment? Commissioner Larson?
Yes, I move that we appoint Jane Fitkin to the Planning Commission for an unexpired term ending zero two fifteen twenty-seven.
Perfect. Do we have a second? Commissioner Gottlieb?
I second the motion.
Perfect. Do we have any discussion on this?
I can say...
Yeah, absolutely.
If she is going to be a great addition to the Planning Commission, if her work on the other, on the nonprofits I'm aware of, is any indication, she will be a great addition to the Planning Commission.
Perfect. Any other comments? Commissioner Davis?
If I could talk, I just want to point out that she is one of our participants in our Citizens Academy, and so I'm really glad to see someone with a greater knowledge of the city coming on to one of our committees.
Perfect. Any comments from you? All right, perfect with that. I'll bring that to a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, that brings us to our first public comment session of the meeting. Please state your name and physical address when addressing the commission. Do we have anyone for public comment tonight?
Good evening. My name is Jim Dowling. I lived for the last twenty-five years at eleven Grove Hill Court. I'm also a parishioner at Saint Peter Cathedral and a retired detective sergeant with the Michigan State Police. And the situation I'm here about today occurred at the cathedral last Friday. Through the years, I've kind of helped at the cathedral when situations cross over into the criminal justice system. And on Friday, we had about two thirty in the afternoon, we had an individual come into the cathedral, obviously drunk and/or high, forty-two-year-old male, six foot, two hundred pounds, causing a general disturbance, loud, boisterous, kind of ranting at the world. Father Brandon, the new rector at the cathedral who's replaced Monsignor Michael Steber, Father Brandon heard it from the office area, came to the cathedral, attempted to calm down the subject, and the situation escalated, the person's behavior escalated unreasonably, and the secretary called nine one one. Great. But before the officers got there, the subject clearly stated that he was going to kill Father Brandon Oman. This was witnessed by other staff at the cathedral. Fortunately, eight uniformed officers arrived, two deputies, and six Marquette City Police Officers arrived, and they did de-escalate the situation. It was great. And eventually, the individual, I think you could see he was outmanned, and exited the cathedral. That's when I arrived also. Father Brandon called me. I arrived, the police were still there, although the subject ended up walking down Barreg Avenue. And the officer in charge told me that there was nothing we could pursue criminally. He was issued the standard order of trespass, which, you know, bars him from returning for a year. But there was, I said, even, I said, this situation and this individual is known to the police. He's broke into White's Party Store, was arrested for that B. N. E., but not before he got in a physical altercation with the police officers. He was charged with the B. N. E., charged with the assault on the police officer, spent his time in the county jail, released, now he's active again, actively unstable. And so I bring this up because this is not an isolated incident. So with this individual, he's clearly adversely affected by drugs and alcohol, clearly making a threat on the life of Father Brandon Oman, and yet I'm being told by the officers of...
I'm so sorry that I have to cut you off. You can finish during the second public comment, and I invite you to do so. We'd love to hear that.
No, I'll be heading on.
Okay.
Like I say, not isolated incident.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. My name is Gail Margenimi. I live at twenty-two seventy-two Warner Street in Marquette, Michigan Township. I'm here to represent the battle that we've been having, trying to get you to understand the seriousness of the fluoride issue. If you take time to Google into any Internet, you'll see that Robert F. Kennedy is also ready to enact the release of a recommendation from President Trump in January, saying that it needs to be eliminated from all states. And in Florida, one of the cities there, Naples, has had a township meeting, and during that township meeting, their council decided, yes, we need to do away with fluoride in our water. Now, that was just this last month. That's just one example. And I think there's many other states and counties that are considering it. So we would like to ask for a township hall meeting where we can actually have a sit-down talk, maybe for an hour or so, to go over the details of the science and what is happening to our city. It's affecting adults and children, but we're more concerned about the children at this point. I have a letter here I'd like to give to each one of you, if I could?
You can give it to the clerk, and he can hand them out to us.
Okay, thank you. This is very serious, and it's so serious that President Trump is now going to get involved also. So if you take the time to look at the Internet, you'll see a lot of articles that are both pro and con. But since it's causing cancer and neurological issues, we need to consider it now.
All right, thank you.
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic Street. Last time I was here, I was talking to this group about the need for battery recycling being kept separate from cigarette butt recycling. I've since heard from a number of different people that there are locations around town to accommodate battery recycling, which is great, but my understanding is the batteries do end up in our landfill eventually, even though they're properly handled and properly dealt with. I have an option to present to the city, which I will be doing, but I wanted to give you a heads-up, the letter would be coming. The same outfit that recycles our cigarette butts for free has what's called a battery box, which you have to pay for, granted, but once it's set up and the batteries are in there, you simply tape it up and send it U. P. S. for free back to TerraCycle, which is out of state, and the batteries do not end up in our landfill. And it's a question of investment, of do you want to put the investment into handling them properly here, or do you want to ship them to a location that recycles batteries from all over the country? I don't have a perfect answer for this. I just know that any more options we have, the people who are doing the battery recycling now are volunteers, and they tend to be involved with other projects, and they've asked me if I can find some other way to do this. So when you get the email from me with this option, it's not because I'm not getting a cut, there's no cut involved. It is an option for the city to explore. The cigarette butt recycling program is now going into its fourth year as of two thousand and twenty-five. It has not cost the city a dime. This would be the first time we invest in recycling with TerraCycle. And like I said, it's a standard, you pay for the box, and anything that goes in the box can then be shipped to Illinois and outside of our jurisdiction and keep it out of our landfills and out of our lake area, which has its own value. I can't put a number on it. So when you get this email from me, and it probably will be towards next week, because this is a grading week, that's what's going on here. I'm trying to find an alternative to the current battery recycling situation we have. We have had, at least in the last two years, one landfill fire based on lithium batteries being put into a landfill cell. And I'm not saying that I can solve this without a little bit of cost involved. I am saying that our current situation is getting unbalanced, I think is the right word. Everybody's trying to do the right thing. I haven't found any more batteries in the cigarette butt collectibles, but I don't have an easy answer. It's just we have to keep batteries out of our ecosystem the same way we should keep cigarette butts out of our ecosystem. So when you get that email from me, there'll be an option for you to explore. It's not in this year's budget, but it could be considered for next year's budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Did you each get a copy of two things?
Can we get your name and physical address?
Valerie Olson, one sixteen Hillcrest Trail, Marquette. So I just wanted to address the recent federal ruling that happened on September twenty-fourth, which I've already, I think, made you aware of. But I want to read from the page that I had, you each get a copy of excerpts from the federal ruling in the third paragraph. In all, there is substantial and scientifically credible evidence establishing, this is the judge's ruling, okay, from this federal court, that fluoride poses a risk to human health. It is associated with a reduction in the I. Q. of children and is hazardous at dosages that are far too close to fluoride levels in the drinking water of the United States. The reason it's important to understand the TUSCA standard, which there has to be a one to ten, there has to be ten times more than what they deem as safe, because we have other sources of fluoride. We've got children drinking juice made in fluoridated cities. We've got them eating processed foods that are processed in fluoridated cities. So we can't tell what dose any one child is getting, which is especially important for the children and the unborn, because the newborn don't have protection. An adult, the mother can detox it, it goes right into the brains of the children. So as a result of this ruling, we've had twenty cities that have stopped it, starting the day after the ruling. Forty other cities are now discussing it among their cities. That's why we're asking if you could please schedule a public city council time when we can have dialogue, instead of we come and speak and we don't have any response. We'd like to be able to discuss this issue. It's really important. It's so important that it's putting our children at risk. And, you know, that should, I know you have so many things on the agenda that you need to take care of for our city, and I appreciate all that you do. I don't think there's anything more important than the health and well-being of our children. We've been doing this for fifty years, really seventy-five years. And now in this recent trial, the one thing that came forward was our dentists, whom I addressed recently, I was asked to address them on fluoride, are told to trust the American Dental Association. The American Dental Association proved themselves untrustworthy in this trial, because they actually tried to get the report changed, altered. Take out the part about lowered I. Q., please, and it was all exposed in the trial by FOIA request. So we can't, our dentists know now, you can't look to the American Dental Society for, American Dental Association, for your direction, okay? So please seek out the truth of this, and please let us know that we can have a gathering where we can discuss this. I think lots of people would like to have a dialogue, and that would be really appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment today?
Dave Campana, seventeen eleven Grandview Drive, South Marquette. I'm here because I believe in the positive effects of fluoride in our water, and I commend the city of Marquette for providing a service to the citizens of Marquette County. There are two issues concerning fluoride. Issue number one, does it reduce cavities and prevent further systemic infections within kids? This isn't even an argument. Absolutely, it does. Preventing cavities prevents bacteria getting into the body, preventing further infections. Do you want your kid sitting in a dentist's chair, if they don't have fluoride, getting drilled on? It's not a pretty sight. I don't think you'd want to see that. Issue number two, does fluoride cause systemic health problems? This is a long discussion, and this is where the most controversy is. And if I thought fluoride caused health problems, you know, I'd be the first to look into it and examine it. I'll be blunt. I think fluoride at the recommended dosage level, which is zero point seven parts per million, as the city has, is perfectly safe. Try to prove that it isn't. I say to you Commissioners, if you want to form an opinion on fluoride, you have to decide who you want to trust. Which organizations do you want to trust? Whose data do you want to trust? Personally, myself, I prefer to find, you know, follow the findings of the following organizations, and you heard this list before, the C. D. C., the American Medical Association, the American Dental Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Family Physicians, WHO, World Health Organization, Michigan Health and Human Services, the list goes on and on. These organizations are non-political, they're non-biased, and they're highly respected. They've been around for a long time. You have to trust them. These organizations do professional studies. They follow rigorous guidelines to produce results, which are then subjected to peer review to confirm the results. The only purpose of their testing is to produce the truth. They have done over three thousand studies proving fluoride at the recommended dosage to be safe and effective. If you want to make a legitimate decision, you have to decide which scientific studies and findings do you want to believe. Do not be led astray by anybody or any group that may twist the facts or not tell you the truth.
I'm sorry, Dave.
Uh, three minutes. I'll be back for the second half, so stick around.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. This brings us to our presentations. We have two presentations tonight. The first presentation will be the Cliff's Dow Project Update by project team Richard Barron, Nicholas Tatro, Foley Baron, Metzger, and Yipe, P. L. C. LLC, and Special Counsel of the City, Tom Anthos, and Ryan Whaley, TriMedia Environmental and Engineering. Thank you all for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Back again, and we're going to review tonight something that you've all seen a number of times with a few updates, other than one new Commissioner, who, this may be new for him, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions. Again, Rich Barron from the law firm, Foley Baron, Metzger, and Yipe, with Nick Tatro here, Ryan Whaley from TriMedia, as well as a couple of other TriMedia people here as well, Bob Leto and Tom Anthos. Might as well give them a call-out as well. So going through, I am, believe me, I'm not going to read slides. We're going to hit the high points. But we're going to cover a number of things, the history of the site, some of the data, what's going on with the site, and some future activities associated with the site. And one of the reasons that we put this presentation together, so the Commissioners will have something from their packet that they can refer to later on, in case there's any follow-up issues or follow-up questions. So long-term industrial site in the city of Marquette, used for a number of things. The issue that we've been dealing with is the wood distillation process that was used to generate chemicals from wood, where they'd put the wood, you know, logs in big retorts, heat it under pressure, and then that would distill out various chemicals that they would then further refine. As part of that process, it generated a lot of waste. We were fortunate enough to be able to uncover these pictures that show a couple of things, and a lot of this was before there were real significant environmental regulations. And while the pictures are oriented slightly differently, the picture on the left-hand side, showing the north part of the parcel, shows the currents taking discharge from a ditch along the south side of the parcel. This picture on the right-hand side shows the plume of chemicals going into the lake right from the site, which could be tars or other phenolic-containing compounds or things like that, being taken by the currents in the other direction to the north side of the site. And the reason that this is important is because there's been further findings off-site, and so this may very well be a significant impact on the environment from these historical discharges. And just to refresh the commission's recollection, when the city acquired this property a number of years ago, they then had the ability to control the property, they took on responsibility for what was on the property. It's certainly our position in reading the agreements, they didn't take on responsibility for something that had gone off the site before the city acquired the property, whether it went off the site into the lake, whether the companies shipped waste off to a landfill someplace else, that wasn't part of the deal. So we're really focused. As part of the work, and you'll see this later, but if I can ask Ryan to go up and demonstrate on the right-hand slide there, when we talk about some limited source removal, if you'd please just go up and sort of highlight where that is, just point to it so the Commissioners can see.
Yeah, a little for the presentation, we have talked about this in a little more detail, but there was some source area removal in this area back in two thousand and eleven, and we'll see some slides here come up this week.
Thank you. So different parts of the parcel there, this is after things have been cleared, you know, in the late nineties, the city acquired it, and then shortly after that time, the city did some investigation, then it sat idle for a while, and then Eagle came back and said, you need to do more investigation, and then our firm was brought in, and we've been working with the city since. This just demonstrates, from the Superior Dome, the sports complex there on the south in the nineteen ninety-two, just how the site has changed. History of the site, what we're dealing with now is the center forty-six acres, the same area that we've been dealing with during the course of our firm's involvement with this site and with this project. But one of the neat things associated with the forty-six acres is, through the work that TriMedia did and us working cooperatively with Eagle, we've been able to narrow down, from a north-south perspective, the areas that we need to monitor and the frequency that we need to monitor, because there has been some natural attenuation, and we've got a more robust dataset now and can say, well, we don't need to sample all the way across the site, which costs the city quite a bit of money. So narrowing it down has been very helpful for the city and helps the project team focus their attention on the portions of the site that need it. When we look at the site here, you'll remember that one of the other projects that we were involved with was the issue of dealing with the revetment there along Lake Shore Boulevard. Lake Shore Boulevard, of course, was destroyed by the high-energy environment of the lake. The Lake Shore Boulevard, as the council knows, the commission knows, has been moved in a little bit, but as part of that project, and Nick and I went by there today, you can see all those cobbles that are being placed out there to act as a buffer, sort of, you know, living revetment, as the commission has heard previously, but also to dampen the energy of the waves as they come in, rather than coming up and crashing hard against the rocks and then dispersing that energy typically by going over the rocks and eroding the road, and who knows what other havoc, you know, that was causing. So with this more, with the living revetment that's been put in place on a project that was led by Dennis Stackowitz and the city's outside engineers and city internal engineers, that should help. And the reason that's important relative to Cliff's Dow is because the more benign that environment is on the shoreline, the better we're able to assess the data that's coming in over time and not wondering, was this impacted by a huge storm, where we had a lot of waves coming up over, you know, more water coming, where, you know, it wasn't expected, even though that was off the site, it still could potentially impact how groundwater was flowing. So this is simply some of the background for your packets, but the key issues here, the city has certain obligations under Michigan law, which the city's been following. The site itself has the potential for redevelopment. As the commission knows, there's a deed restriction on the property that prohibits residential use unless the state approves. That's been the subject of a lot of discussion on other things, because, you know, when residential use is prevented by a deed restriction, all anyone really wants to think about is, I want to use it for residential, as opposed to using it for something else. But there's lots of other things that property could be used for, and simply because there's a deed restriction does not mean that the city would not be able to get Eagle to approve residential use if the proper safeguards were in place. And there might be mechanisms to address that earlier. In fact, Nick and Ryan and the other people from TriMedia and I spoke with Eagle today about some of those other mechanisms, because the north part of the property is something that a private developer is looking at trying to reuse, and they've been having roadblocks with Eagle in terms of what Eagle might approve and what Eagle might not approve. with Eagle in terms of what Eagle might approve and what Eagle might not approve. So it's doable, but there are certain safeguards that would have to be put in place. Nick's worked on a project, as have I, that deals with some of those safeguards, and if you could just hit on a couple of them.
So, I mean, the main concern being the vapor intrusion pathway. If you leave contaminants under the ground, they can volatilize under the ground and come up through the air and into our noses, causing health effects. So you want to block those vapors from being able to get to the breathing zone. You do that by a number of different ways. Seen people use impermeable membranes, thin layers of a certain type of plastic to act as a barrier between the vapors and under the ground and the breathers above the ground. You could also use what's called a soil vapor extraction system, essentially having that same type of barrier there, but there being preferential pathways for the vapors to go through pipes that then go out above the breathing zone, not getting into, again, people there breathing the air. And then there's also other more direct ways to use. You can use positive pressure within buildings to keep the air out, if you're talking about a larger building. So lots of ways to do it, not just one way to skin this cat, so.
There's been a lot of environmental work at the site. That work is still ongoing. Tri Media was out there today, taking samples when we went by there, because we sample, we, they sample on an agreed-upon schedule with Eagle to make sure that we have data that is relatively consistent from year to year, in terms of not taking it one time in July only, and then another time in December, you know, trying to make sure that we're getting samples at roughly the same time each year. We thought that we were going to be able to get closure based on what's called a mixing zone. And you might remember from some earlier presentations, that Eagle does not necessarily require you to just look at one particular spot as to what the contaminants are in the groundwater. And here, the issue that we're dealing with is what's referred to as the groundwater-surface-water interface. And by the issue, I mean that that is the point where we are measuring the levels of contaminants in the groundwater to determine what might happen with they migrate further out into the lake. And we're using a presumptive GSI location. Right now, it's the spot pretty much as far as we can go with a monitoring well without getting our feet wet, because, you know, what could actually be happening is anything that's escaping into the lake is escaping hundreds of feet or farther, you know, away out in the lake where you'd have more attenuation. So the levels, you know, if they were coming from the site, you'd expect to be less the farther out they go. Part of that investigation, though, that we've done, our investigation's been all on-site. What Eagle has done is some offshore investigation, and we'll talk about that in a couple of slides. But the difficulty of cleaning up this site is because it is diffuse contamination, for the most part. Maybe little tar balls, things like that, because everything was demolished, they didn't do much in the way of remediation at all, you know, at least on the part of the property that we're dealing with. So it's not like you could just pull up an underground storage tank, dig a little bit of dirt, and call it good, because you got to clean margins. Because it's so diffuse, it requires a different way of looking at how to address the site. We were able to find, as part of some test investigation some years ago, some area where there were some much more significant amounts of contaminants. These were some, you know, liquid gooey, sticky, smelly tar-type materials in some old conveyances, old piping, perhaps some old vats or things like that that were on the site. And so the project team coordinated with the city a limited source removal, because by taking out source material, we're preventing that material from continuing to allow water to go through it, to leach out more materials to the groundwater. It was something we were able to do on one particular location, you know, through a stretch there, as you can see on the top, but it's not really practical to do for the entire site. Ryan, anything you'd like to add on that?
I don't know.
Okay. So, the importance of the mixing zone evaluation, which we still hope to get to at some point, is rather than having a, you know, a non-approvable release, the state looks at a broader area and says, well, when we look at this as a whole, we've got low enough contaminants migrating off-site that, you know, from a health and safety and environmental perspective, it's not going to be a problem. And we'll talk about later some of the things that we're hoping to do to be able to get to a mixing zone approval in the future, and we thought we were there at one point, but then, for some reason, we started getting some significant higher concentrations that threw that out the window, so we had to, you know, continue to monitor. The GSI, groundwater-surface-water interface, just as a refresher, that's where groundwater is migrating to where it would hit surface water, and then surface water, you know, could be 100 feet into a lake or into a body of water. It's not just on the surface, but it's water that's not groundwater. And it could be contaminated or non-contaminated, but it's just, it's the GSI area. And then the mixing zone, if we think of the front of the podium here as the length of the Cliff's Dows site that we're concerned about, rather than just looking at one spot, the engineers would average out, using formulas that the state provides, to determine what we're looking at in terms of mass across that higher, that entire area, and what that might mean in terms of possible impacts to the environment. I mentioned earlier the state investigation, there's a couple of slides here that were provided to us by the state. They've been very interested in the offshore area, and they've done bathymetric surveys, evaluating what the sediments look like, you know, in terms of depth. They've gone out there to do some coring of sediments. They've brought in some more robust equipment, they were out there this summer to do that as well, to try and expand the area that they're looking, and trying to determine what there are for contaminants that are out at the lake, in the lake, and what they've found as part of their investigation so far, and this is pretty interesting, is that they're not seeing contaminants in the water column, in the liquid water, as it were, above the sediment, but they are finding contaminants in the pore water, that is to say, the interstitial spaces between the sediments, when they put a sampler down and pull that up. And, you know, and that water does have impacts that are consistent with the Cliff's Dows site, but it's undetermined right now as to when those impacts got there. From what we've seen so far, and, you know, the data analysis is still going on, and the state's still gathering more data, as you would anticipate, if you had a source area such as the site, the farther away you get from the source area, the more attenuated or more diffuse those contaminants are. Just if you think of the plume of smoke that I've, you know, used as an analysis before, and example, right, the smokestack is more concentrated, it goes out, it's more diffuse. What the state has found, as part of their pore water sampling, is they have found levels of contaminants in the pore water that are higher than anything that is being found on the Cliff's Dows site. Now, that analysis still hasn't been fully completed. The importance to the city is that higher contaminants out in the lake in the pore water is a pretty good line of evidence that that material was from a source other than migrating off the site in the groundwater. And we saw those slides earlier, where the Cliff's Dows folks used to just dump right into the lake. So there is a plausible explanation as to why those materials are there. The state is still reviewing that. Eagle is looking at the most recent data from this summer, and has to, you know, do a more robust analysis there. This is just another example of how the state's gone out and done some of their pore water sampling. And they've been trying to get a bigger picture as to what's going on offshore, and you'll see from a couple of these slides, and I'll toggle between this one and the next one. In 2022, they sampled in a certain area. In 2024, they sampled out. So if we go back and forth, wrong button there, let's go back there. So you can see they're closer to shore, and then they're going farther out, trying to get a handle on where materials are being found, and then help them determine what they believe the possible sources are. I mentioned earlier that we've seen the groundwater-surface-water interval, and some of the samples go up, which has messed up being able to do the mixing zone. Ryan, do you want to talk for a moment here about what you've seen based on the depth?
Right, yeah. So, you know, the increases in concentrations of groundwater that we saw in 2017 triggered further assessment in the form of installing additional monitoring wells to better understand groundwater conditions at the site. And primarily, what we're seeing at the GSI compliance points along the lakeshore is the impacts are at depth, you know, ranging from 20 up to 35 feet below the surface. So it's not just something we're seeing right at the groundwater interface.
So if you look at this last bullet here, and this certainly brings it home relative to what happened to Lake Shore Boulevard, with more precip in certain years and more significant storm events, it was very important to have a resilient shoreline protection, but there also is a potential impact to groundwater flow and other impacts that could, you know, hit the site. If there's a lot more precip, you know, up gradient, more water eventually gets down to into the groundwater, where it could then migrate through. If you've got a higher head pressure, you could have more migration, so that could impact your results. When we talk about evaluating the conditions at any particular location, in many spots, these are, they would install nested wells. Nested wells would be a shallow, medium, and deep well, all isolated, so when they take a sample from the deep well, they're not getting a sample from the middle well, and they're not getting a sample from the shallow well. The reason that that's important, to analyze what's going on at the site, is you can try and determine where you have your various concentrations, and when we're looking at possible remedial activities, something to address the GSI issue, then knowing where you've got the particular concentrations can make a big difference as to what type of remedy is selected. We've talked about storm events already, everyone on the commission is certainly familiar with those and what the road looked like. This simply shows, you know, a rendering of the relocation there of the Boulevard and all. So, one of the things that the project team did for the benefit of the city is, we did some research, and we applied for a brownfield cleanup grant. Typically, people that own property, with some exceptions, are not able to get grant money to deal with it, you know, under EPA regulations. Because the city had acquired that property a certain number of years ago, and for some other reasons, we were able to talk to EPA, talk to their council, and get their approval that the city, simply because they're a liable party under, you know, by contract agreement, was not prevented from getting a cleanup grant. So we applied a competitive process, we talked to a number of different consultants, we looked at some possible presumptive remedies, and we put in a request, and we got, for the city, $964,000 in high change there to be able to do something. As part of that process, then, we sent out an RFP, after we'd received the grant, sent out an RFP for consultants to help implement that. Tri Media was not involved in the grant application process, because they've just been involved on actual doing the monitoring work on-site, and you can't have crossover on certain things. So you can't, typically, you can't use someone to help you with the grant application process and still have them get the contract later on. After a competitive process, as I believe the commission is aware, Tri Media was selected to be the lead consultant. They wouldn't be the contractor necessarily, doing whatever remedy was called for, but they are assisting the city in evaluating what's going to be recommended next. And while the presumptive remedy would be an in situ, in-site, in-ground type of remedy, as opposed to trucking and disposal, digging something up and taking it away, that is not necessarily the remedy that would be selected. And so, Ryan, could you just talk for a moment about what Tri Media is doing to try to evaluate what the options might be?
Right. So there's a typical order of events that comes with these grants, it's kind of spelled out here a little bit, but, you know, we have to develop a QAPP, Quality Assurance, project plan for EPA review and approval, and there are a few other various documents that we had, that EPA needs to vet before we can move forward on this work. In parallel, we will develop a revised alternatives analysis for cleanup actions, and which will ultimately lead to development of an RFP for contractors to perform the actual remediation work.
So as part of evaluating what the alternatives might be, Tri Media will talk with other contractor, with, talk with contractors, not with other contractors, evaluate the technologies that are out there. The one that we thought would be the best when we applied for the grant would be some type of a chemical oxidation, injections scattered about, in a, in a very engineered and scientific manner, scattered about the site, making sure that we were getting the up gradient portion, as well as as much as we could of the downgrading portion, because it wouldn't really serve, you know, the best function for the site in the future if we only got it right before it got to the lake, and then had more contamination coming through later on. There are other things that could be considered, such as a permeable reactive barrier, whereas the groundwater comes through, there's chemicals or other reagents in the ground that it sort of self-cleans as it goes, but that doesn't do anything with the up gradient area. It only prevents, you know, exceedances potentially out at the lake. So this is an ongoing process, and it will, it will take some time to evaluate, but at least there's funding that is available to deal with it. Now, you know, when you look at almost a million dollars of funding, oh gee, that should be able to take care of the site, no problem. Probably not, because it's a big site, there's high contamination in various locations, and what makes it more difficult is what I mentioned earlier, is that it's diffuse contamination. You know, the site operated for a lot of years, the environmental regs weren't what they are now, and so, you know, anything that's diffuse is much more difficult to treat or to address than something that's more concentrated. So that'll be part of the challenge going forward. And that's, that kind of brings us, you know, back to the discussion spot. I know that many commissioners have heard this a couple of times, but there's always new developments here, and so I would just open it up to the commission.
Commissioner, do you have any comments or questions? Carrie, you're smiling. Anybody? Pro-Tom Schlegel?
Thank you. Thanks, guys. It's been a few years since I've been a part of this discussion, and I'm glad to hear that the progress is, you know, being made, and there's, you know, we're not just sitting on this piece of property expecting Mother Nature to, the solution to pollution is dilution it. So, quick question, I guess, maybe I didn't hear it properly, or didn't, didn't pick up on it, but when you're talking about the, the head pressure in the water, and is there a difference, or is there an impact, let's just say we, if there was a building on top of the land area there, would that land pressure, head pressure, cause more seepage out into the lake? Is that, is that a concern that, I can't imagine it's not been talked about, but...
Sure. So what I was referring to, Commissioner Schlegel, was the fact that you could have higher head pressure up gradient. So if you had, you know, if you think of a big column of water, and you're, you're getting to a similar point, but if you had a big column of water, like an artesian well works by having, you know, water higher elevation somewhere, and so then it pops up at a lower elevation under pressure. So if we have higher precip in certain areas, and if it can get down to the groundwater, that could enhance the flow rate. As to whether a building on top, I don't know the answer to that. I think that could be engineered around, because they would probably be building on footings anyway, based on the fill materials that are there at the site. What could be an advantage to the site from an environmental perspective, if I can, with your permission, just kind of continue that thought further, is if you have an impermeable barrier on the surface, then you've, you're preventing materials from coming from the surface on down and impacting the groundwater. But depending on, you know, how much you have a continuous column or homogeneous area there from the surface on down, it may or may not make a difference, because you recall the nested wells, so you've got, if you had, if everything was all the same, if it was just in sand, as an example, you might see more homogeneity than we do here at this particular site, where you've got cobbles, you've got debris, you could have aquitards there, or barriers, you know, between layers and things like that. So a building potentially might impact, but I wouldn't think that that would be the end-all because of the way they would engineer around it.
I just kind of think of it as, you know, a teeter-totter. You put
Exactly.
One end, it's going to come up the other end. Thank you for that, that information. And also, as far as the properties that sits right now, what if you open, would the city have to worry about, you talked about some of the, the air pollutants that we, you know, we don't want to be ingesting? If, let's just say we put a walking strip in there for, for people, would it be possible to be used as a, a public space for, for that type of use, or would it be advised against, because we don't have a certain vapor barrier, or one of those other many things that you talked about in place?
Sure. So the big issue where vapor barriers come into place would be the, the volatilization pathway. You know, in order to have exposure, you have to have a completed pathway. So you could have dimethyl nasty down on the ground, if there's no way for it to get to you, there's no exposure, there's no completed pathway. Just like on this site, you've got impacted groundwater, but the site could be served by city water. So, you know, if there's no direct contact with impacted groundwater, there is no completed pathway between the groundwater that's got chemicals in it and what you're drinking that comes from the municipal water. With, as Nick was mentioning, if you're looking at volatilization to indoor air, it's indoor air, so it's not carried away by the air currents, you've got a box, you know, some type of building on top of it, and so you've got that. It's, the deed restriction is on residential, not on other things. You'd still want to, if, if a party was acquiring it for a building, for example, they'd still want to address due care obligations to prevent migration into the building. From an open space perspective, I've not seen any science that would suggest that that would be anything that couldn't be used, if that was what the city decided was the best use for the property. Because think about it for a moment, you know, people are there, it's transitory, they're not living there, you know, they're not under a dome, as it were, or in a building. There's wind currents going back and forth, so, you know, it's not like that. And even on the site itself, you know, it's, it's not particularly noticeable. And if you were doing something else, you might bring in more topsoil or things like that to prevent direct contact, because now the site's fenced and secure. If there were near-surface contaminants that could have some direct contact If there were near-surface contaminants that could have some direct contact issues, which, you know, there's maybe data already to demonstrate that or not, then simply bring in some clean fill on top, or redistributing compost or otherwise to prevent that direct contact pathway again, to prevent that from being exposure.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I think you kind of touched on my process when we're talking about brownfield setups, you know, you always put a certain depth of cap on, on those properties, right? And to keep yourself from getting down into the mix, if I'm not mistaken.
If, if there was soil where there's a direct contact issue, then yes, a cap of one type would be appropriate. If you simply just had contaminated groundwater and you're not using groundwater, then you wouldn't necessarily need a cap, depending on what else you had.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Guys, thank you so much for enlightening us as per usual. It's obviously a question we get a lot from the public, what's going on with that site? What, you know, what's the future look like? And I don't think anyone really has a good answer. That's understandable. But I guess my one question I have this year, with the million-dollar grant, is that something that would be transferable if the property were to be sold? So for instance, if the city had a buyer and we sold that to a party that wanted to continue the cleanup, is that something that we can negotiate as part of a sale so they get that grant, or can it only be used by the city?
I don't believe it's transferable, but that is not a legal opinion.
Okay.
Let's just be real clear on that. But if in fact you had a buyer that was interested in that property, and the city, you know, evaluates remedies through the consulting firm, and you do RFPs and all that, that doesn't mean that the city couldn't still be the contracting party and applying that EPA money towards that project for the benefit of the developer.
True.
So, you know, there's, there's a workaround there as opposed to, because the city has certain advantages in terms of applying for the grant perhaps that a private party may not. And, you know, the city, you know, made the pitch to the agency and got approval and all of that. So I would think that the, at least the recommended course that I would have is to factor that into the mix in terms of what would be done, with keeping in mind, of course, that the key issue that the city wants to address with the grant is to eliminate the groundwater, surface water interface measurements being in excess of what the state would approve.
Certainly.
And that could involve, you know, areas of remediation on the site, but it would probably be more diffuse. But that could help a developer by potentially helping to decrease the impact of, you know, volatilization pathway, volatilization to indoor air, that type of thing.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thanks for the information. My question really comes around the lines of, you'll have to remind me of what you called it, but essentially averaging of the contamination over a larger area.
Mixing zone.
The mixing zone. Are there concerns with the areas that are of highest concentration that, you know, that would you, would the consultant recommend saying, hey, this portion of land, you know, it's, it's, this portion's all right, but this is the highest concentration? So even though the mixing zone averages out to, you know, the, the levels that you want, are there still going to be areas where you're just like, well, you know, that area would be, you know, preferable not to have X sort of structure, you know, on it? If, if my question makes sense.
It, it does make sense, and I'll answer it this way. There may be portions of the site, and I believe there are, based on what we know from the soil conditions, not the groundwater conditions so much, but the soil conditions, where you may not want to have your building, it might be a better spot for a parking lot, for instance. Sealed surfaces, we talked about a moment ago. The mixing zone criteria evaluates the groundwater that's, as it's mixing into the lake, and, you know, it's not really averaging out, you know, it's probably in an artful way, but the, the scientists look at it in a certain way, and the state looks at it in a certain way. But rather than saying, okay, just because you've got one little tiny spot, you know, you're looking at this entire area, and it, you know, it's much less of an impact. And again, when you consider, consider literally a drop in the bucket in terms of the receiving water body, but, the receiving body of water. But absolutely, there would be sites, there would be areas on the site that would be better suited, I believe, for a parking lot area or something like that, rather than, you know, the actual building itself. And the sealed surface could potentially help, and that would also help to eliminate the direct contact pathway that we spoke about where someone is, you know, getting into the soil. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Two questions for you. The first one, have, the grant that we received in 2023, have any of those funds been dispersed yet?
I'm not sure if they have. If, if so, it would probably have been for the preliminary engineering work, if TriMedia has billed for some of that. But no, I would say no significant portion of those funds has been dispersed, have, have been dispersed, because there's not been a remedy that's been selected.
But you feel confident that at least some of the funds, even if it's just administrative costs, have been dispersed at this point?
I would have to check. I, I'm not confident that they have been, I'm not confident that they haven't.
Funds won't be there in January.
Say again?
It just hypothetically, if, you know, the funds were, if they weren't dispersed, could be easily taken back if administration changes. But if they are dispersed illegally, it's very difficult for those funds to be touched at that point, is why I'm asking.
So not being an expert on the way the federal budget works, you know, my understanding is that they've been allocated, and there's a bucket of that funding, and I think this may have came, come apart from the Infrastructure Act, but I'm not sure, it's been a while since I looked at that. So I don't know that there is a, I don't know that there's no risk, but I don't, my gut tells me there's not a real risk of that being pulled back with the administration change in Washington, because, you know, this happens all across the country. You know, people would rely on that, they would issue contracts, they would have people doing work, that type of thing.
Commissioner, I'll look, I can go ahead and look into that and get you guys a, a response on that one.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll certainly let you know as well.
I would add that being able to spend the money between now and January 20th or so is not going to happen.
But like I said, even if it was just an administrative expense, it's technically was used to some degree. The, the second, second question I had, different line of thinking here, has Eagle done any testing? Because, you know, we've seen photos of the plumes going out of the lake even. Has Eagle done any testing on the fish out in the lake at all versus, you know, 20, 30 miles to the east from here?
If you're looking at the Cliff's Dows site only, I'm not aware of any caged fish studies or things like that that Eagle has done relative to this particular location. I mean, there's been, I know down in Manisteeck, when I worked on a project down there years ago, dealing with the Manisteeck River and Harbor, there were caged fish studies that were done. That was a much more localized situation. And, you know, in a situation that's localized, it's one thing. I think there would be some confounders to the data if you're looking at fish that move up and down the shoreline, as to whether if they did, you know, like mercury, for instance, which is ubiquitous now, you know, aerial rain deposition, precipitation, industrial activities, or even just natural, like up in northern Canada, there are some lakes where the fish are not deemed to be safe to eat, where they did impoundments and you've just got water that, you know, the minerals have naturally occurring mercury. So I don't know without having looked at that carefully. But I don't believe that you could use, you know, migratory fish and say that this impact came from the Cliff's Dows site, because there's just so many confounders.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and I'm sorry if I'm going over things that have already been covered. Can you give me a definition of poor water?
Yes, sir. So if you think of a jar of sand, it's all dry, you know, the jar is full, but if you pour two cups of water into it, the jar is still full, but you didn't, but it didn't overflow. The water that's in between those grains of sand, that would be the poor water. So what's in the sediment itself, and that goes back to the interesting thing that the state's found, is they aren't seeing impacts in the lake when they've sampled near the sediment, they're only seeing impacts when they go down into the sediment and sample the water that's contained in those tight-grained sediments.
And that leads right into, my second question was, the concentration of the contaminants is greater in the lake than it is on the cores on the land?
There has, there have been some areas that have been sampled where the chemical constituents were higher offshore than they were onshore, which support a position and an argument that the contaminants found offshore didn't get there from the site migrating in groundwater. But there's still more data being collected.
And, and that leads to the ultimate question for me is, if so, what does that mean for the city and, more importantly, the city residents, if that is the case?
If the contaminants were from an offshore deposition?
Yes.
Well, there, it may, it may impact what Eagle did relative to who they felt were responsible parties. And if we were going to talk about it more, I would probably suggest to city commission council, city council, that we go briefly into closed session.
I withdraw my question.
It's, it's an okay question, because we've gone into closed session before.
I'm not ready, I'm too new at this to go.
That would have to, I believe, be something that was shared within a letter or a memo between
Okay.
the attorney and city commission, and I would have to look towards Suzanne on that one. But we can certainly plan for that, too, at some time.
Sorry.
Good question.
Sorry, one more thing popped up.
We're here, this is the time.
In a previous discussion, one of the things mentioned to fully, to more fully understand the site was ground penetrating radar.
Yes.
Has that been something that's been considered any further, or is it just something that's not necessary at that site?
I believe that we did both GPR, we, that's the royal we, I was not there doing it, but did both GPR and resistivity evaluation to evaluate, and that was one of the things that led to, if we go back to the slide, let's see if I can find it here. Whoop, passed it. So if you look in that area where we did our, the test pits and the test trenches, that was something that was, there were some anomalies that were indicated because of the electronic evaluation and GPR both, correct?
That's correct.
So to try to determine whether there were structures underground, it's a pretty big site, and you could have a lot of fun out there with a backhoe, I'm sure, doing test trenches, but that wasn't the most effective way to do it. So there was an outside, and I think it was someone from Michigan Tech that came down, wasn't it, that did some of that?
No.
No? All internal?
Art from, he's a, he's a geophysicist.
Okay. All right. So the geophysical studies can be extremely helpful in evaluating what the subterranean conditions might be like, and give you a much better indication, let's look here, let's look there, type of thing. And so that, that's really what led to, let's focus on this area as a possible preferential pathway, or as a possible, here's something that looks significantly different than other areas, and it's probably not just a big concrete abutment.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Substance that we were finding in that site? I mean, was there high conductivity suggesting metals in the ground as well?
My recollection, I, it's been a long time since I looked at any of the geophysical studies, but we've used them on sites where there was no metal at all involved, trying to determine, and we, you know, we hired a professor, I think, out in Kansas for a site out there that was a spill, to try and evaluate what the karst formation or the, you know, the, the rock underground, what it looked like, and where you might have dip and strike and things like that, where different directions of the strata to determine where the groundwater might be going. There is, I believe, a good amount of metal in the ground, rebar or other things, because there's still some abutments underground, and, you know, they, you oftentimes hear they don't build things now like they used to. Well, here, the way they used to build them was pretty robust in some areas, as opposed to wood conveyances and others, but, you know, a lot of concrete, potentially metal and things like that. So those are all things that are difficult to decipher. But I've seen the geophysical studies be very helpful on areas where there was, there was no metal at all, if you're out in someplace where you're trying to address a spill and evaluate what's going underground.
I do have a few questions as well, and they mostly relate to the grant that we were talking about here. So I know that the city has, we've always been on, on the lookout for what we can do with this, how we can sell this site. Would you suggest looking at selling at this point or waiting until the remediation is done? Is this something we should hold off on at this point?
So that's, that's really a policy decision by the city. I don't see any downside to addressing, you know, if you're looking, if you're actually looking at marketing the property, you know, we've talked about this in some of our other presentations, you know, getting a brownfields consultant, probably doing some national advertising, doing an outreach to, you know, maybe at some of the big brownfield meetings about, here's the site, looking for people that have ideas on development. I don't see a downside in trying to do that sooner rather than later. This is a big site, it's not just going to be a snap to move anyway, and you may get some good input from people that are interested in this type of a project that, you know, could give you some ideas. And if you're looking at then implementing a remedy, as the question in terms of transfer, transferability of the grant, well, if it's not transferable, if you're working hand and glove with someone who might be interested in the project, that could be helpful to the city. So I think part of it's a policy, part of it's, you know, arguably a city business decision as to when you want to do it. But I would say that the city has gone way, you know, way far now in improving the city's position based on the data that have been collected, the relationship the city has with Eagle, and, you know, also getting the grant, that there's no downside to trying to move it now. Or, you know, at least have some significant discussions with developers.
Perfect. And then, I know that you said that the grant most likely will not cover all of it. Do we think that it's going to be, I mean, obviously it'd be a ballpark, because we have no idea at this point, but are we talking like double the amount of the grant that it would cost to fill it, or?
I would be completely speculating, because we don't know what the ultimate remedy is going to be right now. That's still part of the analysis that's going on.
Perfect.
And, you know, being able to address the GSI issue, which is the ultimate goal, but we also would like to see it address as much of the site as it could.
Perfect. All right. City manager, did you have anything you wanted to put out there about our plans for what we're going to look at with this, or an update for us on that?
I, I think that Rich had kind of covered that, that point of, there is potentially some benefit into exploring what could go there, or at least looking at consultants, and I think that's something from the staff side of recommending, recommending a conversation with the commission about what, how quickly, or when, or what do we want to do next, and then making this a very public process as well. And so when we talk about a public process, but, you know, starting this with the education piece, then also going, you know, through with the same things that were kind of discussed at the community master plan level of what would we want to see here? What do we want to pursue, and what is, I think, can be tolerated at that point, too? I think some of the bigger hurdles that we're going to, we've been, you know, kind of experiencing we would face is the residential side of things and the deed restriction that currently exists. So, but that's not something that should hold us up necessarily in exploring what could go there in the future. So I think that we'll start coming back before the commission with some ideas for processes at that, you know, after the first of the year.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, I don't believe we have anything else, so thank you so much for coming, and that was very informative.
Thank you. And as I've mentioned to some of you already, this would be my last meeting, I anticipate, presenting here. Nick Tater will be taking over for me as I'm retiring at the end of the year.
Well, congratulations.
But I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our second presentation of the night, which is the Local Development Finance, Finance Authority by Brian Sherry.
Hey, how's it going?
Hi there, Brian, thanks for joining us.
Oh, not a problem. I think you guys received a bunch of information from Joe in your packets. If you have more clarification that's needed, Joe is here as well. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss Innovate Marquette Smart Zone and the role the Local Development Finance Authority plays. I know there's a few new commission members on here, so I wanted to give a little bit background on some stuff, just so everybody's on the same page. The Marquette LDFA was established in 2014. The LDFA is a public corporate body created primarily to plan and finance the development and redevelopment of designated facilities and high-technology activity. LDFA's are typically used to finance the infrastructure and public improvements necessary to attract these types of businesses to the area. There are no costs to the residents. The LDFA permits the city of Marquette to capture future increases in local property tax revenue to fund some of the operational cost of the Smart Zone and leverage state of Michigan funding. We're also starting to see some leveraging of federal money as well, which we'll discuss later. There are no changes in the millage assessed to the property owners. Smart Zones are designed to help municipalities and regions support growth and technology-based firms through collaborations with entrepreneurs, researchers, universities, industry, research organizations, government, and other community institutions to create and grow technology-based businesses and jobs. The state of Michigan authorizes establishment of the Smart Zone and helps provide funding. And we also have the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, or MEDC, delivers tailored assistance to invest and expand operations of workforce in Michigan through collaboration with more than 100 partners. So that's kind of the background on that part of it, and you can see this is how it works, that we're getting, we're setting goals with MEDC, and the LFDA is overseeing those. I was telling Joe the other day, we really need an arm off that LDFA, because we are created by the we are created by the city of Marquette and the city commission, and you guys play a significant role in this process. And we also have to deal with the IMQT board and then the IMQ incubator itself. Currently, right now, we have five members on the board. We have room for 11. So if you know people who are interested in getting an introduction to local government, or just looking for some community service, I have two former students on the commission, and I always talk in my classrooms that it's important for people to be getting involved in community activities. And I hope that we, I always tell my classes to try to get them to apply for some of these, because I know there's a lot of these different boards that have openings on them and find it very important. So we currently have five members, and we have room for 11. We meet quarterly to review updates and provide oversight to the Innovate Marquette Smart Zone. Two members are appointed by the Marquette Public Schools. That's how I got appointed when I was on the school board. One member is appointed by NMU. One member is appointed by Marquette County, and there are seven appointed by the mayor and approved by the city commission. They're city residents. Myself, Bruce Heikla, and Leslie Hartman have been on the board since 2014. And again, we definitely would like to have some more members. Sometimes it's hard to get a quorum when you don't have enough people there to do it. Here are some of the key metrics which most people are interested in. In 2024, the Innovate Marquette Smart Zone received $400,000 from the city of Marquette General Fund and approximately $1.5 million in TIF funding. In addition, they receive $100,000 annually from the MEDC. And in 2024, they received $293,000 from various federal programs. These include EDA Building to Scale Grant, USDA RISE Grant, EDAPWEA Grant, and MEDCSBSHA Grant. If you want to know what those acronyms are, talk to that guy. Also, in 2024, the Smart Zone provided the city of Marquette Arts and Culture Office about $160,000 as part of the Inclusive Economics Initiative. The work of the Innovate Smart Zone was also able to leverage about over $8 million. I was trying to see, because I couldn't read on the smaller one, about $8.8 million for client companies in 2024. And that's kind of the big thing, I think, we've been very good at lately, is trying to leverage those other dollars. If you look above that, in this area, this is what the MED sets as requirements and goals for us. The ones at the bottom are the goals that are being set by Innovate Marquette itself to try to achieve. So during this time period, MEDC goals for new job creation was set at 15 W-2 jobs and 15 1099 jobs for 2024. IMQT was able to help create 44 W-2 jobs during that time period, and which was about three times the amount that was set forth by MEDC, and we did meet the goal of meeting 15 1099 jobs. Some of these jobs included manufacturing and engineer technicians for ABEL Medical, research for MicanoT, mechanical engineer for Electric Outdoors and KMI, and gaming engineer for OptiGames. And if you look, this is kind of the client information that we have here, and the types of, what they're doing within their companies, like CIN Current Company officially valued at $8.5 million. MicanoT successfully obtained $300,000 in National Science Foundation, Foundation Grant. Swim Smart Company officially valued at $5 million. Swim Flex National has a national product license, and we can go on. I won't read through every one of them, but you can see that we've been doing fairly well there. Down to revenues, financials revenues, we were down $267,000 total, and this is due to USDA RISE Grant was lower than expected. Invented it, NMU revenue was down. Time change for Swim Smart tech reimbursement and MED sponsorship was lower than budgeted. Operating costs were down $207,000 due to staff changes and other lower operating costs. We ended up with cash on hand higher than it budgeted. We budgeted for 400, or cash on hand was, yeah, higher. We budgeted for $451,724. The actual cost was $490,642. These are the events that we have planned for 20, or that Innovate Marquette has for 2025. You see the dates there by quarter, things that we're getting involved in. I think it's one thing, good thing we've been doing is being out in the community, trying to make people aware of what's going on and inviting them into participate in the process. So upcoming challenges and goals. Continue to grow and support local tech investment infrastructure, ensure that local tech ecosystem is welcoming and belonging, continue regional and state collaboration to drive visibility in state and federal support, and work with state to grow funding for Marquette tech ecosystem. And that's about all I have. If you have any questions going on there. One thing I would suggest is, as I mentioned this to, to Joe and some others, is that maybe get a couple of members of the commission to meet with our board, a couple of members of our board, and a couple of members of their board, to try to make sure everybody's on the same page, they're comfortable with the goals that are being set, they're comfortable with the goals that are being achieved, and have some conversations so that we're all on the same page. Also, you're invited to go over and check out the facilities at any time that you want to go do that. It's a very nice setup over there, and Joe's done a fairly good job with that stuff. If I was giving this presentation five years ago, and again, I've been on this since 2014, I wouldn't have been quite as positive or confident. I think we were doing more of the event planning versus trying to get the dollars in and successes, but sometimes this stuff takes time to build. So I think we've been better at doing that, and I think the vision is there, and I think the opportunities are getting there. You're starting to see the money come into the clients that we're helping try to develop. And I guess that's about it. Do you guys have any questions?
Commission, do we have any questions?
I'll see some.
Okay.
Of course you will.
Yeah. Thanks. I appreciate it, Brian.
Not a problem.
This is great. I think wrapping it up the way you did right there, and being as, you know, I think progressive as this group has been in the last several years, and to see where it's come from the outside in is really exciting. And so thank the board members and everybody that's, that are involved with that and keep, keep going in the right direction. I can tell you right now, I've got three people in mind that I'm going to try and talk into coming over and having a conversation with you, because having that many open seats and something that is as important as this is right now.
Yes.
We need to, we need to get some, some action going there for you guys to work together.
Yeah.
And I would encourage everyone else that's here or out there listening to do the same thing, because this is, this is, to think of where this has come from, its inception to where it is now.
Yeah, I've been here, you know, 27 years, and this has been a conversation the entire time I've been in Marquette. And creating jobs, and Joe and I've had this conversation in the past, is not an easy thing. We have some, you know, we have some wonderful things about Marquette and Marquette County that should attract, but getting people to get here and see those opportunities is difficult. So you're going to need something like this to probably prime the pump, and working with Northern, working with other organizations is kind of that key in collaboration, and I think Joe's doing a good job with that. So I think we need to build on what we've done so far. Again, Seth, if I was given this five years ago, I was a little critical of, you know, just more of the, we're out there in the public, but we're not really bringing in. And when the community's investing this kind of money into a project like this, they, they need to see some, some outcomes, and we're starting to see some of those outcomes now. And I have some faith that we're going to start to see more outcomes. And that's why, again, I'm suggesting that we get together as boards so that we can have some of those frank conversations on, is this money being spent the way, and are we seeing the results that we want to see, and what is that vision that we want to see 10 years from now to get to where we want to be with job growth and development here? Technology, Fred Joyle, when he was provost Northern years ago, that's what he was discussing, was technology jobs that were going to be available to come to Northern. And I think we finally are getting the group together with this commission, with people at Northern and things that have taken off at Northern, along with Joe, to be able to start building those, those types of opportunities.
Right on. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, Dr. Sherry, I'm just, thank you for coming and giving us a really great presentation that, you know, you hit all the high notes, even though we could talk about this probably for hours in so much detail. But, you know, looking at just kind of the quick list of all these really successful Marquette-built tech businesses earlier, it was thinking back to my first year on the commission four years ago. At the time, a majority of the commission has changed since then, but I was really stressing at the time that this takes time. It takes time to build really successful businesses. And, you know, this process, it's not just an incubator, it's an accelerator, and there's, it's not something that can just happen in a couple of years. And every year when we have this presentation, the list of reasons why this is working continues to excel. I don't remember the number off the top of my head from last year, but the fact that we're now leveraging one city dollar worth of investment into 20 out of, worth of an output is absolutely amazing. And I can't wait to see what this looks like again at next year's presentation. I just want to commend you, Dr. Sherry, and Joe. I really appreciate all your hard work and all of our volunteers on the committee and all your staff.
Now, this is a fun one to work on. It's, it's meaningful for the community. Joe's easy to work with. The other members of the committee have been, been very easy to work with. And again, that's, I think we need more people, more input, more, more discussion, more transparency on what the expectations are, because this is the first time in 10 years, like I said, I've been on this, I've been in front of this, this commission, and nor have I had conversations with any of you about what are those expectations. So I think that's probably, we, we are at that building stage to where we've taken this long. Now it's probably time to see what, what can we do going forward. Hey, I was let off easy compared to the last group. Thanks.
There you go. Thank you. All right. That brings us to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda will be a roll call vote tonight. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Otway?
Move to a public consent agenda's presenting.
A second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
And any discussion at all? Okay. City clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otway?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley?
Yes. All right. With that, the, our consent agenda has passed seven to zero. All right. Now that brings us to our second public comment period of the night. Public comments may not, may not exceed three minutes per person. If you haven't already stated your name, please clearly state your name and address when you come to the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying.
My wife told me, told me I should come back.
I appreciate that.
Again, Jim Dowling. I, I think when I finished before, I don't want to be seen as criticizing the police department at all. I think they're handcuffed. I've dealt with the police department here many times over the years, or many, including when I was still actively working. What I think is going on here is that collectively, you know, the city commission, the prosecutor's office, the judges, the courts, the police department, factions in the community, the liberal orientation of NMU, that as a community, we don't seem to have the collective will to hold people responsible for their bad actions. The bad actors are getting away with bad behavior without consequences. And all I can do is point to what happened on Friday, where we have an extreme example of bad behavior, and the guy walked down the street with no consequences. There's just something wrong with that. And I think it's happening all the time in this town. I know you folks have heard from people living around the warming center, you know, and, and what they have to deal with, you know, what started there from Helen McCormick, a compassionate woman, a compassionate effort, the Room at the End program has devolved into what exists now as the warming center on Washington Street, and something is not right. It's not right. There's criminal activity going on every day, if not anything other than disorderly person activity. The disorderly person statute is being ignored and not enforced. And again, I think it's, it's not any one person. It just seems to be this collective will that, well, we, we can't do that politically incorrect thing. And I know I've heard, too, well, we don't have jail space, and that may be the case. But that's, then we need more jails. We need more space there, you know. So I finished with that. I don't, is this, I like.
We can respond in commissioner comments.
Oh, is there comments?
Yeah, we get to respond during your comments if anyone should.
Oh, I see. So I guess, okay, I still have a little more time. I envision if, if that individual from Friday came in here right now in his condition, his agitated condition, clearly a drug and alcohol abuser, and he walked up and down in front of you all and said to you, Carrie, and you, Jessica, and threatened your life, I cannot believe that he would be walking out of here and shoot down Barreg Avenue. I think he would be held accountable in some way. So why don't we, as citizens of the city and the businesses and shop owners, expect the same accountability and, and, and consequences for that bad behavior?
Anyone else for public comment?
Dave Campano, South Marquette. And again, fluoride's good, safe for the city, and I'm glad we have it. City of Marquette adds 0.7 parts per million fluoride to water in a very controlled environment. I will tell you, there's never been a problem, claim, or health concern at this level. No one has ever proven 0.7 to be a problem, to cause any illness, never. And this isn't just in Marquette, this is everywhere. They need to prove that it causes a problem. They can't do it, because at this, at this level, it's perfectly safe. People that don't like fluoride, you know, they're going to use this argument, you might have heard it tonight. Fluoride at this level causes a problem. I would disagree with that, but they say that. So if it causes a problem here, down here, well, it must also cause somewhat of a problem. That's a maybe. That's not true. I say prove it. We want to see the proof. Science depends on proof. You just can't say these things. So I'm telling you again, before you make a decision, commissioners, on fluoridation and whether to have it or not, be careful on whose studies and findings you want to believe. Look at the background and integrity of the reporting sources. Now I'm going to jump around a bit. Last night, I spoke to the president of the Marquette Dental Association, the dentist in the county. She says they're 100% behind fluoride in the water. Feast on that. Think about that. They're behind it 100%. They're the experts. I read somewhere, now let me say this one, a quote, "American Cancer Society, which tracks research on things that may cause cancer, has found no connection between fluoride and cancer." No connection, any cancer. That's the American Cancer Society. Do you want to believe them or not? It's up to you. I think they're a pretty good group. They're not going to say that unless they mean it. I was told, I read somewhere, the cities of Houghton and Iron Mountain do not have fluoride in their water because they reviewed the sciences first and apparently decided not to do it. That's funny, because I called the water supervisor in both Houghton and Iron Mountain, and they both said the same thing. They've never had fluoride. The reason they don't have fluoride is can't afford the infrastructure. It's not cheap to put it in. They never had it. They don't want to put it in? They don't want to buy the product?
I'm sorry, sir, that, your time is up.
Is it three minutes already?
I'm sorry.
That thing goes too fast.
I know you're used to sitting on this side.
Okay, last thing. Fluoride's not illegal. I'll tell you next time.
Okay.
It's not illegal.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. In the last month, I had to leave Marquette and go back to my dentist in Naperville, Illinois, because I had cracked a tooth, and the tooth next to it was also because I had cracked a tooth, and the tooth next to it was also decaying. I am in my mid-60s, and this was my second and third dental issue. The reason it's my second and third dental issue instead of my 30th and 40th is because Marquette was one of the first cities in the United States to put fluoride in their water. And because of that, I grew up with fluoridated water. Now, I read the history of what has reactivated the debate on fluoride in water. One federal judge in one part of the country had one situation in front of them and asked the EPA to review the standards for fluoride. No conclusion was reached by his court, no conclusion was reached by a jury, no conclusion was reached by a body of evidence. He had a matter in front of his court and decided during his discretion to ask the administrative agency responsible for monitoring this to take another look at it. That is not a conclusion that fluoride has all of these negativities associated with it. And I say that because sometimes, especially with my students, we have to go back to how this started before we understand where we are now. Now, I'm going to echo what Mr. Campana said, who has, by the way, more common sense than most of us do. The difference between 0.7, which has been the accepted level of fluoride in drinking water for the last 40 years, and in those studies, of which I have read 983 pages worth, is that there was a global, global conference of studies, and there was two and three and four and five and six times as much in that study. So basically, people are taking data, and the analogy I use is if you know somebody who has one beer a night, that's one thing, but if they have a six-pack every night, that's another thing. They're taking studies showing a six-pack and trying to compare them to a beer every night and using fear and uncertainty. And I would encourage this commission to yield to your experts in the state of Michigan. If you want to respond to the people who are fussing, then have, have your lawyer write a letter to the State Department of Health saying, what's the deal here? Is the state of Michigan changing its recommendation? That's a pretty reasonable thing to do, but don't be sheep following the lead of other sheep bleeding away because someone said the sky is falling. Learn the facts, and they're, they're real. And by the way, sitting in that dentist's chair, having people put goop in my mouth and ultraviolet rays and all of that, I would drink eight gallons of fluoride in my entire life to avoid that procedure. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment today? Anyone? All right. Seeing none, that brings us to comments from the commission. Up first, let's go with Commissioner Gottlieb.
No comment.
No comment for you today? Commissioner Larson?
No comment today either.
Okay. Moving down, Pro Tem Schlegel?
Thank you, Your Honor. As we get into the later part of the holiday shopping season, I would highly encourage everybody to do their best to keep their dollars local. Look around, explore the many shops that we have, and, and find a unique piece of Marquette to gift to your friends here and away. I've been really doing my best the last few years to try and limit the UPS guy and Amazon from entering my driveway. It's not, not that easy sometimes, but I know that I'm really, you know, I'm making a conscious effort. So at the same time, with these dark nights and these early evenings, please be careful and look out for those downtown shoppers, those people out and about. And as I was driving home from another function the other night, I had a couple of people that were walking out and getting into their cars that were parked along Third Street that didn't, didn't really look before they came out. I was pretty concerned about that, and I really thought, boy, you know, we got to be careful. We got to watch out for our neighbors here and making a point to, just keep an eye out. So shop local and be careful out there, kids. Have a great night. Thank you.
Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Want to respond to a couple of public comments here tonight. I appreciate everyone coming out and speaking. I'm going to start off with the fluoride, just, I'm not a water quality expert or specialist. That's not my background. But whose opinion on the matter I do have confidence in is those specialists that work for the state of Michigan, I don't think anyone would question that the folks that oversee water regulations in the Great Lakes State probably know what they're talking about a lot more than me sitting over here on a commission table. And as far as the legal opinion, you know, that was a judge in Northern California, has no legal precedent here whatsoever, and their background is the law, not water. You might not like it, but that's just my opinion on the matter. If, you know, if something changes here in Michigan, that's another topic, but only other thing I wanted to mention, sir, I mean, I don't know a lot of the details, but I don't know what solution you're hoping to, to hear from the commission, but it sounds more like you want us to have more jails to imprison homeless and mental health people. I don't think that is an honest-to-God solution to that, either of those problems. I think there's lots better ways for society to handle those. I'd love to talk to you more about it at some point if you'd like, but I, I'm not sure what remedy to that situation you were looking for, but.
To save some control?
Other than that, great to be back. And, yeah, that's all I got.
Commissioner Allen?
I'll be really quick with this. You know, I really appreciate the, the comment on the fluoridation tonight in both directions. I think that this is the perfect forum for that, and that's why we're here. As, as your public servants, we should be listening to the things that you want to bring to us. I will say the, the obvious thing that every commissioner and every person that works for the city will say. We, as Commissioner Mayor pointed out, are not experts when it comes to this. Ultimately, we have experts that work for the city, experts that work for the state that we rely on to give us that information. Unless their information is changing, our information that we're going to tell people is not going to change. We're listening to the experts that tell us this. So ultimately, when it comes to, you know, the fluoridation and, and whether or not, you know, that's something that the city of Marquette is going to change, it's not going to change by this body, as far as I can see. It's going to change by what the state of Michigan decides or what the experts ultimately say we should be doing. So I just wanted to make that abundantly clear. Also, when it comes to, you know, talking about things like, you know, the matter at the church, it sounds like it was a terrible situation, and, you know, I really apologize that anyone there had to deal with that. I'm fully confident that if our police department and the sheriff's department responded and they were able to arrest somebody and had an actual crime that they could prove to the district attorney, they probably would have arrested that person. So, you know, ultimately, it's one of those things that sometimes there's just not a good answer for it. And, you know, obviously, if you, if you guys continue to have problems, I continue to reach out to the police department. I urge you to. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
I have no comment this evening because I can't talk.
All right. That brings it to me. I, a lot of stuff has already been covered. You did a great job in covering how I feel about fluoridation. I will follow what guidance I'm given to by experts in that matter, and that's because I know nothing of the science behind it that they do know a bunch about. When it comes to your comments about the incident over at the church, I feel for you. I'm sure it was extremely frightening and awful, but I also know that as a commission, we leave this to our, our city police to handle these issues, and we can't, we cannot step in with them doing their job, no matter what the case. The way they run their, run theirs is completely separate, and as it should be. And I think that they do a phenomenal job. I do encourage you to reach out to them if you think that this is going to become a problem going forward, and look for solutions that you can work with, with them. But I know that Chief Grimm does a great job with his force, and they absolutely would have done all in their power at that point. One other thing I would like to talk about is, over the last week, I actually responded on Facebook for one of the first times, I normally don't, to some comments we had about comments that were made by me during an informal talk with, at Coffee with a Cop with Chief Grimm. I do want to point out to everyone, I don't normally respond on there only because I find it's a poor forum to actually get a real discussion. Things get heated in ways you can't see things in text. I encourage everyone, as with, I assume all the commission does, that if you ever have an issue, all of our information to get ahold of us is on the city webpage. We all encourage you to contact us and talk to us directly with any issues or questions you have about something you read so that misinformation doesn't happen, and we can give you the appropriate information about it, not things that get left out or don't fit in a news article. Other than that, I will kick it over to our city manager.
Thank you. And just to kind of add on to that, another great opportunity to talk to us and bring up questions or issues that you may want to have clarification on, or air concerns or, or opinions, or healthy or friendly debates with city staff and commissioner or two, is community office hours, which is coming up here on Wednesday, December 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Peter White Public Library. And that's, you know, really informal opportunity to have a cup of coffee, have a discussion with myself and some other department heads, and I do believe the mayor will be there as well, if her schedule continues to allow for it, and have some of that conversation, perhaps that we see on social media that is full of misinformation. And it's also a great way to hear your ideas. That's really where we do like to hear some of that feedback and, and continued conversation. And if that doesn't work, please feel free to get ahold of us, whether it's the city commission or whether it's city staff, to discuss anything else at a different time if, if the 10 to noon does not work for you this Wednesday. That's all. Thank you.
With that, we are adjourned at 7:38 p.m.